Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the order, the council meeting of November fourteenth. I appreciate everybody's patience. And with that, we will have a roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Brown. Uh, Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Brown? All right, there are five members present at Quorum. Councilmember Brown is somewhere in the building, but not out here. And Councilmembers Garza and Hussein are absent.
Okay. Uh, with that, um, we'll go into our meditation and pledge. Is there anyone that, um, council members would like us to remember this evening? Or the mayor's office? Yes, um, Mayor, um, Shore?
Thank you, Madam President. I, as Veterans Day just passed, I think it's appropriate that we remember our veterans that served and passed and thank Councilmember Daniels for his service to our country.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple if we could remember, please. Irma Ferguson, uh, Joel Ferguson's, uh, wife passed away on November seventh, and so if we could remember he and his family and their children at this time. Also, on November fifth, um, someone that, um, some of us know very well that worked in, uh, the McCain, um, uh, mayor's office, Joe Flaherty, um, passed away. And so, on, um, the fifth of November, so if we could remember, um, their families at this time, I would appreciate it. So if we could all rise? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of October tenth and twenty-fourth.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. I think they've turned the volume up on these things. Thank you. I would move, um, approval of minutes of October tenth and October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passed unanimously.
And we are to late items.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I, Madam Vice President, I move the suspension of Council Rule Nine to allow for the consideration of late items, which includes the, um, labor agreement through the police supervisory unit.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rule, say aye. Aye. Posed. Passed unanimously, and this will be taken up later in the, uh, council meeting.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. Our first one is the Citizen Academy Graduate Acknowledgement.
If we could have those come forward, and Councilmember Spatafor, who did a wonderful job of his presentation, um, from council with them, and, um, Mayor Shore, did you want to go down with him as well?
All right, well, Councilman Spatafor asked me to, to lead it off. What a great day we do this. This is our, what, fourth one? Fifth? Fourth or, fourth or fifth? This is the Lansing Citizen Academy. Uh, I love the shirts. Thank you all for wearing the shirts. Uh, this is something that we put together several years ago with the idea that we wanted to show citizens everything that we do here in, in city government. We've had so many graduates and everybody loves it. Peter joked, or Councilman Spatafor joked as we came up here that, that, uh, aren't you all in class today? But the thing I always hear from, from the graduates is that, you know, what are we gonna do every week now if we're not doing Citizen Academy? I wanna thank many of our departments that all, um, entertain these wonderful folks. Uh, I believe they, they saw the wastewater treatment plant. I know Councilman Spatafor spent some time with them here, uh, with city council, I believe. Our city clerk spent some time with them in the clerk's office. I got to spend some time with them. Our finance team, um, they really got to see the ins and outs of, uh, city government. So, um, thank you to, to you all for, for participating and being part of this process. Thank you to Delisa and Robin for, um, for being wonderful teachers. Um, and so I wanna thank everyone and congratulate you. Your honor.
All right, and I also congratulate you all and thank you for taking an active interest in city government. Maybe one of you will run for one of these seats and let, let us off the hook, uh, in the future. Hopefully also, I enjoyed my time with you all. Hopefully it was marginally more entertaining than the wastewater treatment plant was. At least it was warmer, I can assure you. We do have certificates from the city council. They are signed by each of us and with the city seal on them. And I will present them out. First up is Anna Benson from Ward One.
Congrats.
Thank you.
From, additionally from Ward One is Virginia Chambers. Jody Coulter from Ward Two. There you are.
Thank you.
Dennis Engelhardt from Ward Two. Dennis? Uh, we've got Samuel Brewster from Ward Two.
Thank you.
Uh, Jean Stewart from Ward Three. Brian Harns. There you are.
Thanks much.
Of course. Congratulations. Uh, Austin Long. And, uh, Daphne Whitfield.
Daphne Whitfield.
And then, uh, also not attending today, Ashley Thomas from Ward Two, Keisha Beverly from Ward Two, and Hannah McCauley from Ward Four. So, thank you very much and thanks for being here tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, and we're actually going to go a little bit out of order and pull forward item number thirteen, uh, to handle under, uh, presentations, the appointment of, uh, Tierston Walters to the Park Board.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Madam Vice President, we're gonna have Councilmember Daniels do that. That's okay.
That's right. Uh, Councilmember, um... Daniels. Daniels. I knew it. I knew it. It was there. I just kept wanting to say Brian, so...
Thank you, Vice President Wood. So this is the appointment for Tierston Walters, the at-large member of the Park Board, for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
All right, we have, um, a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passed unanimously. If you can come down now, and we'll get you sworn in.
That was great.
Okay. Okay.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Park Board Member according to the best of my ability.
Okay, at this point, we have, um, part of our, uh, special ceremonies and presentations. This is South Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So, the, um, South MLK Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority was created in twenty-nineteen, um, and, um, they had their first meeting in twenty-twenty-one. The current members are Price Dobernik, Amanda DeFries, Truce Stokes, um, Nikki Solden, and, um, Don Mooseover, who are board members. Um, and so today, they're gonna give us a presentation on their development of their, um, finance, development and finance plan that they've worked several months to prepare.
All right.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. And so, Mr. Dobernik, if you would like to start.
All right, well, thank you, Vice President Wood, and good evening, council members, and Mayor Shore. Again, I am Price Dobernik. I'm the business manager of the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union here in Lansing, and I mainly bring that up because our home office is at fifty-four oh-five South MLK in Lansing. Uh, we were chartered in Lansing in nineteen oh-three, and we built our union hall in nineteen-sixty-five, and we've been there ever since. And we recently updated the, uh, facility, both inside and out. And, uh, so with that, I have great interest in the commission being successful, and I wanna thank Mayor Shore for the appointment and the ability to serve. So with that, to get our presentation started, I'm gonna turn it over to Aurelius.
Good evening. As he said, my name is Aurelius Christian. I'm the Corridor and Commercial Development Specialist with the Lansing Economic Development Corporation. Very excited to be here tonight, uh, to present on what I believe to be a very momentous milestone for economic development in South Lansing. Tonight, we plan to discuss what a CIA is, a Corridor Improvement Authority. You'll hear me reference that a lot. Corridor Improvement Authority is kind of a mouthful, but I can assure you, I'm not talking about the Central Intelligence Agency. Provide a brief history on the South MLK CIA, um, as well as, uh, the city's master plan for South MLK and key projects and, uh, financial projections for, uh, the development and TIF plan. Uh, so a Corridor Improvement Authority is a, a public entity. Uh, they're governed by local business owners and residents that live within point-five miles of the district. And their purpose is to be champions for the corridors and to really lead and spearhead the, uh, development and revitalization of corridors that can use some love. Um, CIA's utilize tax increment financing, uh, to invest in public improvements and other projects outlined in the development plan, so that'll be covered a little bit more later in the presentation. As read before, there are currently five members of the Corridor Improvement Authority. There are three seats available, so if anybody's interested and lives within point-five miles of the district or is a business owner, uh, there are open seats for you to apply. And so, on this slide shows the district area of the Corridor Improvement Authority. Uh, the north boundary is the railroad tracks just south of Victor Avenue, extends south to I ninety-six and goes east-west, um, five hundred feet of the center line of the corridor. So the South MLK Corridor Improvement Authority was established in twenty-nineteen, and members were appointed in twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen as well, but progress saw a pause due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The first board meeting was held in twenty-twenty-one, and later that year, the City of Lansing, uh, selected a, a ho, was selected to host a fellow from the Community Economic Development Association of Michigan, which happened to be myself. And that was able to increase the capacity and really, uh, help to, uh, move forward with the, the efforts there. So in twenty-twenty-two, the authority and myself worked hard to gather community input, uh, that helped shape this development and finance plan, and it was adopted in September of twenty-twenty-two. So this, um, slide right here just shows the master plan for South MLK Corridor Improvement Authority. There is, this is based on the, the form-based code, so this will guide the development as projects come up for the, the authority. Additionally, this is the, the transportation aspect of the master plan. Most of the Corridor Improvement Authorities follow the principle of transit-oriented development, which aims to foster more, uh, public transportation use, uh, along the corridor. And the Corridor Improvement Authority, uh, takes the, the Main Street approach, which is a four-pronged approach, uh, from economic vitality, which focuses on capital, incentives, and other economic tools to revitalize the corridor. Organization, which focuses on creating sustainable revitalization effort through partnerships and capacity building. And design, which focuses on the physical design and visual, visual assets of the corridor. And then promotions, which is more so the marketing and promotions of the corridor and businesses, businesses along it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Price to just give an outline of some of the key projects that the authority is planning to pursue.
All right, thank you. And as Aurelius mentioned, as far as some of the bullet points I'm gonna touch on, we put these together through collaboration of the commission, uh, community outreach, surveys, and just knocking on doors. So, i, to be brief, um, we've definitely identified, um, hopefully some redevelopment options for the Logan Square Shopping Center. Uh, that should be no surprise if you're familiar with the corridor. We also wanna work in developing a revolving business micro loan fund, which we could help develop and assist folks to apply for, and then, of course, incentivize developers to redevelop vacant or blighted properties along the corridor. Um, some of the things we identified is, as far as, um, design goes and maybe issues, um, we wanna explore possible traffic calming measures at key intersections. Um, if you travel the corridor, you certainly know it's busy and there's definitely traffic issues, uh, speed issues, and so on. Uh, we also wanna implement streetscape landscaping improvements, and again, administer traffic calming measures, um, anything we can do to slow the traffic down up and down the corridor. Uh, from an organizing standpoint, um, again, organize efforts to clean and beautify the, the corridor, um, work with business owners, and of course, enhance fundraising and grant writing opportunities to find every dollar we can identify to help in our effort. As far as promotions goes, um, developing and branding, uh, creating the marketing strategy for the corridor, um, that would also include materials, flyers, banners, and, uh, you know, anything we could do to draw community events to the corridor would also be a, a win for us. And essentially, you know, that's it in a nutshell. There's certainly gonna be more added to this list as we go on, um, but that's what we wanted to identify for tonight. And so with that, I'll turn it back to Aurelius to discuss, uh, funding sources.
Thank you, Price. Um, with that, uh, Cias are typically, or mostly financed through tax increment financing, so revenues from, uh, the tax increment will be a primary funding source, but there's also ability to get grants, donations of that sort, as well as Mayor Shore allocated a hundred thousand dollars, uh, to all of the Corridor Improvement Authorities, so that'll be very big to being able to get a jumpstart on pursuing the projects that Price just outlined. And just a, a high-level overview on what tax increment financing is, um, the key thing to note is that it's not imposing a new tax. It's, uh, freezing the existing tax base, so the taxing jurisdictions will still get the, um, existing, uh, taxes that they are getting currently, but any increment, uh, will go toward the Corridor Improvement Authority's reinvestment into the corridor. And so this chart shows, um, projections based on a one percent growth rate. So after fifteen years, which is the, the life of this plan, uh, would be one point five million, almost one point six million, and then after, after three years, it would be seventy-six thousand. And as I just mentioned, we, or the Corridor Improvement Authority will have a hundred thousand dollars to start. So, another thing to note here is that, uh, on the consent agenda, there will be, uh, another public hearing being set for December fifth. This is due to, uh, not providing the twenty-day notice to the taxing jurisdictions, so there will be another public hearing on December fifth, but wanted to be able to present tonight as it was already set.
You took my job.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, same thing, we need to have, we're gonna have a hearing today, but we need to have an additional one because of notice.
Thank you. Anyone, any other questions? Seeing none, we wanna thank you for coming down. I also would be remiss if I didn't, um, mention all the work that Councilmember, uh, Hussein has done on the corridor and also some of the work that, uh, Councilmember Garza has done as well. So, we appreciate our, um, our second and third board council members for working on this project as well, so, thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is brownfield plan number eighty-three, Moneyball Brownfield Redevelopment Project at nine twenty-three and nine twenty-seven West Saginaw Street.
Councilmember, uh, Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm just wondering further, sorry.
So, Chris, are you gonna present first, of course? Okay.
So this is, this is a, uh, brown, a presentation for a brownfield plan for, um, Moneyball. Um, and the location is, uh, nine twenty-three and nine twenty-seven West Saginaw Street. First of all, I, I'm really excited that you're redeveloping that area. I'm, I'm excited to see what's gonna be, and so thank you for investing in Michigan, continuing to invest in Lansing. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And so we'll turn it over to, um, Mr. Klein, and then, um, you can turn it there, um, after that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Vice President Wood, uh, council members. We're excited to present this project. It's, uh, uh, Moneyball Sportswear. They are a very well-recognized, well-known, uh, business in our community. Uh, this evening, I'm joined by, uh, the founder and owner of, of Moneyball Sportswear, Desmond Ferguson. Also, Sean Elliott of SE Growth Corporation, that's overseeing some of the development side of things, as well as Connor Zuck with Tritera, um, overseeing the environmental side of the brownfield plan. So the, the project is at nine twenty-three and nine twenty-seven West Saginaw. It's within a neighborhood focus and also within the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, uh, within the development area there. It aligns with the authority's mission to enhance, uh, the, the corridor by attracting investment, uh, in commercial properties and reinvigorating, uh, commercial and retail activities. Uh, and that's, uh, in a nutshell, what, what this project's looking to do, reactivating a, uh, a former storefront, uh, that has been vacant. So, uh, again, uh, Moneyball, uh, being a, a well-known, uh, business, helping them expand their operations into a building of their own, uh, then utilizing, uh, the increase in, in taxable values, uh, to reimburse a portion of the extraordinary costs associated with this project. Uh, that includes environmental activities, uh, demolition and, and site preparation. So, uh, with that, that's the, the requested brownfield plan and, and obviously the public hearing and presentation tonight, but I'll, I'll shoot over here to, to Desmond and Sean to give some more information on the project.
Good evening, Desmond Ferguson, uh, owner of Moneyball Sportswear. For those that you're not familiar with Moneyball, we've been in business twenty years, right here in Lansing, Michigan. We currently have two retail locations here in mid-Michigan. One on the west side of Lansing, right on, uh, Waverly and Saginaw, as well as in Meridian Mall. So, had my eye on this property for a couple of years, was able to finally negotiate and purchase in, in early January. Um, and being right here in Lansing, obviously, the two locations are outside city limits, but, you know, me being from Lansing, a, a kid that grew up playing soccer, going to garden middle school, Everett High School, and then having the opportunity to play professional basketball for eleven years in eleven different countries, as well as in NBA, and then be able to come back, actually, last time I was in this building, or in this room, as a head coach at Everett High School from two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen, the boys' basketball program. We went to the, you know, final four at Breslin two years in a row. So, I am Lansing, uh, and, and it's been important for me to, uh, have a business right here in, in my hometown, where I, I probably could've went to other cities, other states, but Lansing is very near and dear to my heart, so to continue to grow, uh, not only for our business sake, but to be able to give back to the community which we come from, is something that we're big on. We've been able to give a free basketball clinic right here in Lansing the last seventeen years. We do the Moneyball Forum, which is also, uh, free to the public with college and professional players. And every month in November and December, we do a Sox for the Homeless Drive, where we raise over a thousand, fifteen-hundred pair of socks, uh, that we donate to the homeless with Footprints of Michigan. So, we're a very connected community, um, and that's, you know, a big reason why we're, we're working on this new project that will be our headquarters, so we'll close the other two locations once we get this going. We plan on starting construction within, within the next month, and, uh, with a plan to be open late spring, early summer. So, that's pretty much, uh, my story. I got Sean Elliott right here with me with, uh, SE Growth, who's really been, you know, helping us get, get the development going, and, and, and that's been his expertise in, in helping us go on, so I'll let him speak briefly. Briefly.
I'll be briefer than that. So, yeah, Desmond touched on everything. We all know that site really well. I've done a few houses in that neighborhood. I love that neighborhood. I know, um, uh, Vice President Wood lives in that neighborhood. The neighborhood has incredible housing stock, and I think, um, the perception of the neighborhood sometimes held back a little bit by some of the blighted buildings. So, this project's just gonna be really exciting, and you prob, most of you probably know, I've done quite a few buildings here, and we always say projects beget projects. So, since Desmond's purchase and commitment to this property, uh, both the neighboring property, uh, one thousand one, and then across the street, the Park Furniture Building, were also, uh, purchased, and I'm gonna be involved in those projects with Alonso's, but, um, you'll have more exciting news coming from that area. That intersection's gonna really, really thrive with these projects, and the, with the Moneyball project especially, it's, it's really what we look for, you know? It's a hometown business. He's consolidating in Lansing proper, so all the taxes that are created in the, in the property will actually come here. Two locations will be consolidated there, so there's gonna be a lot of efficiencies that, um, that he creates that will be able to be redev, uh, reinvested back into the business. So, it just makes perfect sense. The building actually has really good bones, um, studio intrigue. We also used local architect, um, created just incredible products, so, um, that's about it. That's the story. We just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what was going on there. We'll be putting some more signage up on the site and getting the messaging out a little bit more, but, um, it's exciting, and, again, he's gonna really change that, the fit and feel of that area, but the new, the other projects that we'll be bringing in there, there's a synergy with the projects and, and, uh, the traffic that they'll be bringing, so this, this is, uh, this is gonna be one that I think we all really look back on with success, and I'll let you guys go. I know it's a long meeting already, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, we have a question from, or a statement from Councilmember Spatafor.
Yeah, you read my mind. It's more of a statement. I just wanted to thank you. Um, I'm glad that you're in front of us and looking to invest in the city, but I wanna thank you for investing in the city before coming to us, and you've been a, you, your company has been just a phenomenal partner to, uh, student athle, student athletes across our city, our community. I see your logo everywhere. Um, you're supportive of so many things, so it's, it's gonna be a pleasure to vote for this, um, in the future. I also wanted to thank you. I did have, I did go up to the Meridian Mall store. I had to go to a U of M game. Unfortunately, I was looking for U of M gear, and you didn't have any, so I wanna compliment you on your good judgment as well, so, thank you.
Any other questions? The only one I have, um, Mr. Klein, um, at one time, behind the stores was a public parking lot that was owned by the city. Is that still considered owned by the city, or has that been reverted back to the property owners?
I know that there's a, a public parking lot on the, the north side.
Correct. That one's still there, but the, this used to be a public parking lot as well.
So it's all, yeah, you may.
Is it possible you're talking about the public parking lot that's actually on Butler? That would be, uh, once, one parcel east of the two where this development, this development's taking place on nine twenty-seven and nine twenty-three, and immediately east of that, where, um, where the coffee grinding is happening and those storefronts, they do have a public parking lot.
Okay, so the balance of that is not considered public anymore?
I don't, these two parcels, I've never seen any in the title indeed that we've done. I haven't seen any public recognition of the two parcels where this construction
Well, maybe the business is used as it, as if it was...
Yeah, and these, these were always in private ownership that is... Yeah, and these were, these were always in private ownership, as far as I can find and change the title.
All right, thank you. That answers my question. Okay, with that, we want to thank you for coming down this evening, and you'd like to stay around, see if there are comments under the public hearing process. Next, we have...
The Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District for Michigan Certified Development Corporation for several addresses on East Michigan Avenue for a presentation.
Okay, councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Basically what Clerk Swob said, this is the Michigan Certified Development Corporation who want to establish obsolete property rehabilitation act district for 1703, 1717, and 1723 East Michigan Avenue. Let's see. Looks like it's gonna take 12 to 15 months. Renovation of the building for use as a headquarters for the Michigan Certified Development Corporation. Office use and demolish the 1723 building to convert into outside workspace as an extension to the conference training room that will house up to 50 people for a networking function and up to 30 people for training purposes. So, they're saying that together, this will bring 15 to 20 full-time jobs to go along with the approximately 100-plus construction jobs created during the 15-month renovation schedule. They're also looking to lease or sell to another user, 1703 East Michigan. Whatever I didn't add, please fill it. Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Aurelius Christian, corridor and commercial development specialist with the Lansing Economic Development Corporation. I am joined by Steve Preco of Michigan Certified Development Corporation. Initially, just wanted to give a high-level overview of what an OPR is, and then I'll kick it over to Steve to talk more about his request to establish the district. So, an OPR is an obsolete property rehabilitation act. It provides for a tax incentive to encourage redevelopment of commercial and commercial mixed-use buildings that are contaminated, blighted, or functionally obsolete. There's really two steps to an OPR, one being establishing of the district, which we're here to do tonight. So, this is initiated, can be initiated by the governing body or by the request of the owner of at least 50% of the proposed district. And so, it goes from that request to a public hearing being provided by, as we're here to do tonight. The governing body then adopts a resolution establishing the district and the determination that it meets the requirements under the legislation. And a district may include one or more parcels, and it allows for the property owners to apply for a certificate, but in itself does not apply any tax incentive. That's where step two comes in, the certificate. So, once a district is established, then they are able to apply for, an owner within the district is able to apply for a certificate with a clerk. Then, again, they, there's a public hearing that is held, and the local government unit can, shall by resolution approve or disapprove the application for the certification, certificate for up to 12 years. Once it's approved locally, the application and resolution is then sent to the state tax commission, and within 60 days, it approves or disapproves the request, and then the state tax commission is responsible for the final approval and issuance of the certificate. And so, how an OPR works is it freezes the current tax value of a property, so the city will still receive the set level that it's at, and then that's able to happen for up to 12 years. School and operating, school operating and state education taxes are not abated.
Excuse me, we have a question from councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I don't have a question other than a statement. I just want to tell you, I really appreciate you coming to explain what a TIF was and what an OPR was. I mean, we know it here on council, but it was really refreshing to hear that, so thank you very much for doing that.
My pleasure. So, lastly, the benefits of an OPR. Really, it encourages the redevelopment of blighted and obsolete commercial properties into vibrant commercial and mixed-use projects, which I really believe will be achieved with this project. It also reduces the threat to public health. A lot of these buildings are contaminated. It also attracts additional people and businesses to the city of Lansing, as well as increasing the adjacent property values, and additionally, it creates jobs. So, with that, I'll, unless there's any questions, I'll kick it over to Steve to talk more about the project and the requests.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley covered quite a bit of what we're looking to do, but a little bit about Michigan Certified Development Corporation. We've been in the area for 40 years, in the Lansing area, and we're currently in East Lansing, so we're looking to move 20 jobs that are currently in East Lansing into the Lansing on the Michigan Corridor, and something that we're focused on because we're Michigan Development. We want to develop of different areas, and we looking forward to developing that Lansing property. They're high-paying jobs, and we're looking to just really improve that. It's a single-story building, office building, and we're asking today for the district to be allowed for us to stabilize the property and while we finalize plans and, and cost for the project. We also, you know, the Michigan Certified Development Corporation is, is SBA lending, so we do SBA lending across the state.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you for coming down this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Councilmember Wood, I'm gonna request that we pull items 23, 24, and 25 from the agenda for consideration this evening.
Okay. That was 23, 24, and 25, correct?
Let me make sure that's correct. Yes, 23, 24, 25.
Those will be pulled at this time. Any other comments? Councilmember Spatafor. Okay, councilmember Spitzley.
I just wanna let everybody know that the Downtown Lansing, Inc., there's gonna be this Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00, Friday 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. The Kringle Holiday Market, it's, you know, local, local shops. There's gonna be holiday shopping, ice skating, street food, and fun activities. So, looks like there's stacks barbecue, picnics, and shopping those vendors, and so I encourage everybody to come downtown and shop local. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Vice President Wood. With the election season over, I just want to thank all the voters for their support. I lost my election in a tight race to Ryan Coast, who is here tonight, so I just want to say congratulations to Ryan, and we are already working together to make sure that the transition is smooth going into January, so that the people of the first ward don't have any lax in representation.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the clerk.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Speaking of the election season, I do want to put out a huge thank you to folks who were involved in, in this election. We had over 600 election inspectors at various locations throughout the city, including those that were counting at our absent voter counting board. We had tens of thousands of people come out and vote. We had lots of people who registered in person on Election Day and cast their vote, so we had some great participation. I also want to thank other city partners, including the Parks Department. We used some of their buildings and had facility, had a station there, a satellite for two weeks over at the Foster Community Center. Want to thank LPD for their assistance. Thank the Fire Department for their assistance in housing some of our drop boxes, and, you know, just, it's kind of an all-in thing for the whole city to be involved with the elections. We, we appreciate all the support, and from the several churches who host some of our polling places, as well as the school district who hosts many of our polling places. There's a lot of involvement, and, you know, when you get 40,000 people participating in an election, it's, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate, I just want to thank everyone involved. There will be some, there have been some big changes in how we operate elections since in the 17 years that I've been clerk. We've seen a lot of change, and most of that has come after the 2018 constitutional amendment that changed some of the voting rights and voting provisions. We had another constitutional amendment that will be in effect for elections starting next year, so there will be a lot more changes to come, so keep your eyes open. You know, a lot of voters, we have your email address, and we try and provide you with information. If you want to give us your email address so that you get that information, if you're not on our list, I encourage you to contact my office and sign up to do that. And with that, we are to the mayor's comment, or I'm sorry, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, and I don't, so, there's one. Okay, looks like we've got one. You have one minute, so tell us the details.
Okay. My name's Heather. I am a staff member, member at Everett. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my students who waited for two hours to announce their events, so I guess I will be doing it for them. We are having a Hispanic Heritage Showcase at Everett High School on Thursday, November 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in our brand-new auditorium. I would encourage anybody from the council or the community to come by and see what Everett High School has been putting together for culture and community events. We will have food, a historic documentary, lots of dancing, folkloric dancing. Everett Dance Company will be dancing. Several people will bring their own cultural dances to the stage, as long, as well as cultural music, singing, poetry, and a fashion show. So, I really do encourage you guys to see the great things that we are doing at Everett, and having our students kind of show the community. They really wanted to be here, but I had to send them. It's a little late, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing that. All right, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, and legislative matters includes items seven through 29 on the agenda. In addition to the late item, the collective bargaining agreement for CCLP? I was struggling with CCLP, okay. So, and then also, if you're here for item six, the show cause hearing, you would want to sign in with Jason, and the sign in for either of those sections is in the next, ends in the next minute or so. With that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schur.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few items. One, while he's still here, I want to congratulate Aurelius Christian on his 10 out of the next 10 selection, our very own, so we're very proud of him and amongst others. Very own Lansing resident. I wanted to add to what Clerk Swob mentioned and thank, in addition to everyone, he thanked our 311, which was open, I know we talked about this, which was open 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and took all kinds of questions for Election Day, so they were able to help relieve some of the calls from our clerk's staff. So, thank you to Augie and to Lisa and all the folks who are over 311 and with a very successful election, and again, I think the clerks, the clerk and his staff were exceptional. I want to thank all the citizens of the city of Lansing for supporting our public safety bond, and thanks to everyone in this body who supported that as well. We are very excited. Certainly, the work begins now, so we'll be starting everything we have to do with, with all the bonding work and the program design and the schedules, and we've already started having conversations, but I believe that we have, we have shown an incredible effort of respect and dignity for our police officers and firefighters in our courts, and it will be an incredible future that we have with our public safety. So, I'm very excited, and thank you to everybody who supported this in the city of Lansing. Terms of upcoming events, this, this Friday night is Silverbells, so we are very excited for Silverbells in the city. It's gonna be a great light parade, as it always is, and this year, we'll be doing both drones and fireworks, so don't leave after the tree is lit, because we will have a lot of excitement. Our HRCS, Human Relations Community Service, Community Connect will be on Wednesday, where we'll be giving out gloves and hats that were collected. Our Citizen Academy graduation, which you saw here today, the graduation itself will be at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow, so we'll get to do that again. Saturday, November 19th, is our mobile food distribution at 9:00 a.m. at the South Church of the Nazarene, which is a drive-thru, and adding to what was already mentioned with the Kringle Market, the, the ice skating rink that had been in front of City Hall will now be over at Rutter Park along with the, the Kringle Market, so we'll, we'll have some, some activity over by the library as well. So, we're excited for all these things, and that's it. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you.
And I wanted to jump back in. Thank you for reminding me, I was, 311 was definitely a lifesaver for us, not just on Election Day, but for the whole 40 or so days leading up to election. They were able to field many of the calls that we normally get, and then especially on Election Day, you know, we were able to focus on the calls from our election inspectors, calling with the direct voter issues rather than answering calls about where do I go to vote, and, you know, some of the, some of the more routine calls, we gave them some training on how to look voters up and tell them where they vote, so they were, they were really helpful and really helped us make it through, so thank you, thank you to Lisa and Augie and everybody. All right, so we are to show cause hearings. We have item six regarding 304 Regent Street.
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Vice President Wood. So, this is a show cause hearing and the orders to make safer demolish to the owners of property located at 304 Regent Street. This, this building has a value of $66,336, a land value of another $5,700. There is an estimated repair of $45,000. They received a housing code violation letter on May 1st of 2017, again on January 10th of 2018, and for a third time on August 14th of 2021. They have not paid taxes since the winter of 2020 and have accrued $3,880 in red tag fees since 2018. It was sent to the demolition board on 8/25/2022 and passed for 30 days, make safer demolish then, and it has fire damage.
Thank you.
All right, and we have no speakers who have signed in for that, so on the referral of the show cause hearing.
Excuse me, that will go back to public safety.
All right, and then we are to public comment on legislative matters. We do have a number of public hearings that I'll briefly read in to the record. We heard presentations on many of them. Item seven, the OPR for Michigan CDC at East Michigan Avenue Properties, the Brownfield Plan for Moneyball at the West Saginaw Properties, the South Martin Luther King Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan. We also have a substantial amendment to the annual action plan for the home and ARP allocation plan. Item 11, an ordinance to repeal the permanent requirements for solicitors of charitable and religious donations, and item 12, an ordinance amending Chapter 1300 Marijuana Operations.
We had presentations made on item seven, eight, and nine, so we will skip down to councilmember Spatafor for the substantial amendment information.
I have my microphone on. Item 10 is a substantial amendment for the FY 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan for the Home ARP Allocation. This includes $2.7 million for tenant-based rental assistance for homelessness, at risk of homelessness, and those fleeing domestic violence. We presented this about, was it a month ago? Must've been.
Pardon?
We first heard about this about a month ago.
We first heard about this in Nevada a month ago.
Yes.
Yeah, and this is the public hearing for that, so that's all.
Councilmember Spitzley, did you have a?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Not as much of this one, we did have a good presentation on this. I think what we have been trying to do is merge this with our recommendations for our ad hoc committee on housing and residence safety, and so Ms. DeSessa, we have asked HRCS, we've put in two requests for them to come to our ad hoc committee to talk about how we can, you know, how this plan and how our recommendations and what we can do to support that, and so, anything you can do to facilitate them getting back to Sherry. We invited them on 10/18 for this Friday, and we also invited them for the meeting a couple weeks ago, so if you could help us out, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Spatafor, the next is the ordinance.
Item 11, repeal sections, Chapter 844 is chapter, section 27 and 9, that are permit requirements for solicitors and charitable and religious donations. The clerk identified this is one of those, this is one of yours, right, Chris? Duplicative requirements that's covered by state law and that we do not need to enforce, so we're removing it from our code to allow our code enforcement folks to focus on issues that the state's not monitoring.
And the final one on marijuana.
Yeah, the final one makes several changes to the marijuana ordinance. One moment, please, will I pull up the memo real quick? One of them is adds the definition for the marijuana educational research license, it's a new license type under our law, and it expands the definition of marijuana microbusinesses to include Class A, 1300.04 amends the definition of applicant to reflect the current state practices, as well as amends the insurance requirements to expand access to coverage. 1300.09 adds the drive-through possibility for marijuana sales without zoning approval, and 1311 assigns educational research facilities to the same zoning and safety, a safety compliance processors and secure transporters, that is, under our zoning industrial mixed-use and urban flex. And then 1317 codifies the mayor's 2020.01 executive order and adds a licensing fee for, I believe those are the marijuana.
Okay.
Events.
Thank you very much.
Pop parties.
That takes us to.
Okay, our first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Rebecca Kason. And speakers have three minutes on legislative matters.
Okay, I talked during the committee of the whole on some of this, and I would ask that the council members and the mayor refer back to those comments. In addition to those relating to the Ovation Center, I'd like to remind the council that the income from the PEG funds is based on cable subscriptions as well as internet subscriptions, as they talked about in their presentation. They did not nail down for us how much the cable income has declined and how much the internet income has come in at, and whether the two balance each other out, or if there is a negative or a projected negative still in the future where the internet fees will not compensate entirely for the lost cable fees. I think that's something that needs to be nailed down as closely as possible before any vote. Whether they danced around it or not, and they did, these bonds are full faith and credit of the city, so if there is a gap for any reason at any point in time, it is the city that is on the hook to make good on those bonds. So again, just keep in mind that we have the history of the city market and its subsidiary, the lug nuts, the Lansing Center, the golf courses, and LEPA. Not one of them has ever performed as expected, and not one of them has ever performed without needing subsidies. Then on to the Brownfield and Oprah topic, here I'm going to diverge a little from what you might expect. As a homeowner, if I don't take care of my property and keep it up, first off, code compliance can come in and cite me and do things like you've seen them do in these other presentations. Second, I'm not going to get the value out of my property if I ever decide to sell it, and the thing also applies to, say, Brownfields. Carol, you may remember this from all those years ago when we talked about Brownfields, and I mentioned that I had dogs, and I didn't clean up after them. If I didn't clean up after them, I had a real brownfield in my backyard, and it was contaminated and it wasn't healthy, and it was something that I could have come to the council along with these other issues and said, okay, you know, as a homeowner, I should be able to apply for a Brownfield. I should be able to apply for an Oprah, because I didn't take care of my properties, so now I want you to bail me out. There should be a system in place that forces property owners, commercial property owners, to maintain their properties so they don't decay and get to the need of an Oprah, and there should be a system in place that requires property owners, if they vacate a property and it's contaminated, they must clean it up. There's got to be something that you can do through code compliance or other methods where these things could be implemented. Why should the public be held to a standard of commercials or not?
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca Kason, followed by Sharon Dade.
My name is Rebecca Kason. I am the Executive Director of the Women's Center of Greater Lansing. I first of all want to just thank everyone. I, four weeks ago, just started this position, and everyone who I've reached out to has been very helpful. We've served the community for the past 17 years. We provide free personal hygiene products, professional clothing, a computer lab, resume building, interview preparation, and so much more. We also provide counseling services free of charge to our clients. For most of the past year, we were lucky enough to have a grant that paid for a part-time mental health counselor. That grant has run out. For the remainder of 2022, we are paying her services out of our general fund. We are a very small not-for-profit, we cannot afford to do this long-term. This service is incredibly important to victims of domestic violence. Officially, 70% roughly of our clients are victims of domestic violence, but if you talk to any of our mental health counselors or our interns, that number is closer to 100%. Many of these victims are unable to leave their abusers. If their abuser is the one providing their health insurance or is able to see their EOBs, it can be dangerous for the victim to seek counseling services. We do not charge our clients, and we will not bill their insurance unless they've said that they are safe. Without our services, many of these women would not have access to mental health care. The ARPA grant is designated for COVID relief efforts. The global pandemic has had a devastating impact on domestic violence victims. The National Commission on COVID-19 and Criminal Justice reported an increase in domestic violence cases in the United States by more than 8%, and that's the reported numbers. We're hearing significantly larger numbers when we talk to people working in the field. Not only were the victims facing traditional risk factors for domestic violence such as economic instability and isolation, they were often stuck with their abuser 24 hours a day. They had little opportunity to call for help or seek services. This is adding an additional layer to their trauma. While the stay-at-home orders have lifted, the trauma has remained. Our clients are in need of counseling services now, more than ever. Please, as you guys are working with the people who are distributing the ARPA grants, please consider our proposal, as this is going to make a huge difference in the lives of women in the Lansing area. Thank you.
Thank you, and our final speaker for this segment is Sharon Dade.
Thank you very much for, Councilmembers, and Mayor Schorr. I'm here to just really encourage you, I'm speaking on behalf of the Capital Region Housing Collaborative, which is about 20 organizations that come together to really look at gaps in terms of homelessness and people who are at risk of homelessness. In our community right now, we're pretty much in a crisis. Our shelters are at capacity. We are seeing in our court systems right now where evictions are way behind, it's taken months to get through the court system, and so I would say two things to you, that we have to take a two-pronged approach, and I think that the ARPA proposal or amendment does, helps to do that, and the two-pronged approach would be, number one, we have to attend to the people that need help now. That's the medical model, right? And number two, we have to prevent it in the future. And so, the only way to prevent it in the future is to have permanent affordable housing, and over 50% of this amendment allows us to do that. Sometimes we can lose the forest for the trees because we try to fix everything right now, but if we don't plan for the future, we're going to have a group of people that will continually need our help. So I would say kudos to that, to seeing that in the amendment. The other thing that I think is really important here is the idea of non-congregate sheltering. All shelters do not fit every situation, although I think our shelters work very hard in order to try, but we know that non-congregate sheltering works well for families, particularly large families, non-traditional families, or individuals that just need a different environment. It is traumatic even to the best shelter to walk in and have to live with 40, 50 other households that you do not know, and they do a good job, but it is still traumatic. And so, there are times when we need non-congregational sheltering, so it's good to see that in here. I would say that, not just to you, but to the community at large, we need more nonprofits that are willing to serve. We have a lot of very dedicated nonprofits, but we need more people to come to the table, and this is an opportunity to do that. This is open to everyone, anyone who wants to help serve in these areas, and so I am just very happy to see and would encourage all of you to help to develop the capacity of those other smaller nonprofits that have a heart to serve, so that they can actually help in doing the work that needs to get done. I think, other than that, I would encourage you to say that the largest population of individuals experiencing homelessness today are still adult individuals, but the fastest growing are seniors and families.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I also want to acknowledge some written communications we received, one from Elaine and David Wombolt opposing the Chapter 13 Marijuana Operations Ordinance Amendment, from also Elaine and David Wombolt, supporting the South MLK Corridor Improvement Authority Plan, and from Nancy Malo posing the Oprah on Michigan Avenue, and with that, we are to the referral of the public hearings, item seven, the Oprah.
To the Development and Planning Committee.
Item eight, Brownfield Plan 83.
Development and Planning Committee.
Item nine, the MLK Finance Plan.
Development and Planning Committee.
Item 10, the substantial amendment to the annual action plan.
To Committee of the Whole.
Item 11, the ordinance on solicitors.
Ways and Means Committee.
And item 12, the marijuana ordinance.
To Committee of the Whole.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda. We have already done item 13 on the consent agenda, so we have items 14 through 22.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam Vice President, I move the consent agenda as amended, which includes the Office of Highway Safety Planning Grant for impaired driving speed and seat reinforcement, a Office of Highway Safety Planning Grant for bicycle and pedestrian safety, grant exceptions for election safety, election security grant, fire display license for Ace Pyro LLC for Silverbells, a city council meeting scheduled for 2023, the public hearing for the South MLK Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan, a claim appeal for Claim 1909, a claim appeal for Claim 1911, Act 6222, a purchase of property parcels 13010109430021 and 33010109430-031 on North Cedar Street to facilitate long-term, to facilitate long-term storm drain maintenance.
All right, we have a motion before us. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we, items 23 through 26 were polled, so we're, items 23 through 25 were polled, so item 26, the setting a hearing for the 425.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Sure, I would move the resolution with such a public hearing for December 5th, 2022, for the Chapter 290, nope, is that right? Lost my spot. Setting a public hearing for December 5th for public Act 425 agreement between Windsor Township, this is a 25-year agreement with an option to renew for 25, allowing property taxes and city of Lansing taxes, as well as income taxes to be collected, and remitting the under three mils that Windsor Township currently collects in exchange for moving the property into Lansing's jurisdiction, as well as allowing for BWL to service the territory with water. The project is moving the Consumers Energy Facility from Willow Street to Windsor Township, with the company committed to a plan to redevelop that land, I'm sorry, bring that land back down to developable space, as well as engage the neighborhood. It is a 10-year plan we've discovered today, which includes design, build, and dual occupancy, then vacating, demolition, and redevelopment for a nearly green space by 2032, but the hearing will be on the 425 agreement between Windsor Township and the city of Lansing.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And item 27, make safer demolish for 2026 West Jolly Road.
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Vice President Wood. So this is a resolution and the orders to make safer demolish to the owners of property located at 2026 West Jolly Road. The building value is $27,451. There is an estimated repair of $31,542. Their housing code violation letter was 914/2021, and there are no current permits on anything. It was sent to the demolition board, 623/2022, and they passed it to make safer demolish at 8/23/2022, and the reason is the conditions are unsafe.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And now the late item, the CCLP Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Councilmember Spatafor, it's your night.
I just want everyone to know, I was given notice about this around like 11:00 AM today, so, I miss Adam. All right, so the item before us is the ratification of the tentative agreement between the city of Lansing and the Union Capital City Labor Program Supervisory Unit. It is a four-year agreement with a 3% increase in the first year as well as a retroactive, as a signing bonus of $1,000, which is retroactive to July 1, 2022. A year-two increase of 3%, a year-three increase of 3%, and a year-four wage reopeners. The plan, the CBA before us, makes changes to the retirement system as well as employee contribution and adds Juneteenth and New Year's Eve and removes Presidents' Day as holidays enshrined in the collective bargaining agreement. It is a four-year deal, as I said, beginning on July 1, 2022, retroactively, concluding on June 30, 2026. I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution, and this affects 44 of the command staff, so with that, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. The Committee of the Whole introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by adding Chapter 291, Sections 291.01 to 291.04 to establish a conflict of interest policy and regulations for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD programs and funding, including but not limited to continuum of care, emergency services grants, and CDBG, and to provide penalties for any violations of the provisions of this ordinance. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Do we do three guesses, or do I just say Councilmember Spatafor?
There you go.
Councilmember Spatafor.
What the clerk said, but additionally, we've enlisted the city attorney's office to help explain what's before us, as this is a, as I understand it, a HUD requested or mandated a change to our ordinances, so Lisa was here to explain it to us.
Thank you, yes, this is an ordinance that was requested to be established by HUD. The city attorney's office did reach out to HUD and request that they review our proposed ordinance to see if it was agreeable to their goals, and they declined to do so. So they suggested that we codify it and will notify us after if there's a problem. Just overall, really broadly, the ordinance implements policies and regulations as it relates to any real or perceived conflict of interest, as it relates to the city's administration and use of HUD funds for programs that are established and funded by HUD. The ordinance discusses who these conflict of interest provisions apply to, broadly stated, anybody who is receiving HUD from HUD funds through the city, and prohibits such conflicts, and it also establishes disclosure requirements. such conflicts, and it also establishes disclosure requirements. And then it codifies a process for potential conflicts to be addressed through various city review.
So HUD pulled Nancy Pelosi and told us to pass it before we could see what's in
Was that a rhetorical question?
She's not commenting. She's very good. I would move the setting of the public hearing and the introduction of the ordinance.
We have a motion to set the public hearing. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, then we are on to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Chapter eight twenty-two, Sections eight twenty-two point zero one through eight twenty-two point zero five, eight twenty-two point eleven, eight twenty-two point eighteen, and eight twenty-two point nineteen, and repealing Chapter eight twenty-two, Sections eight twenty-two point sixteen, eight twenty-two point seventeen, and eight twenty-two point twenty, to eliminate city licensing requirements for massage therapists, as read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on, on City Operations and is on the order of immediate passage.
So we're gonna have Councilmember Spitz, or Councilmember Daniels. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Wood. So the, everything the clerk said, just like Peter said. And so the ordinance to repeal requirements for massage therapists, it's a redundant law on our books, so just to clean it up, the clerk requested that it be removed.
It was simple and sweet, so. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
On passage of the ordinance, Councilmember Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. And we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you want to sign in and still have not done so, please complete a yellow form in the back with Jason in the back in the next minute, in order to be eligible for the next section of public comment. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Councilmember Spatafor, you keep putting your pen up, but I know that's who I'm gonna call on.
No, it's, I'm gonna be, hi. It's the Peter Spatafor Show tonight on public access. Madam President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full, and that proper referrals be made by you.
We have a motion before us. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
We have items from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
Fiscal year, first quarter budget and vacancy report.
Committee of the Whole.
Items from the mayor, two items regarding Z one, at one oh nine Randolph Street rezoning.
Development and planning.
And two items regarding SLU one of twenty twenty-two, one oh nine East Randolph Street, special land use.
Development and planning.
Voter-approved sale of city property for a portion of the North Cemetery.
Committee of the Whole.
Two items regarding make safe or demolish for forty-five eighty Seaway.
Public Safety Committee.
The appointment of Dr. Thomas Woods to the Human Relations and Community Services Board.
City Operations.
The appointment of Mary Ellen Jeffries to the Employees Retirement System Board of First Seas.
Ways and Means.
Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act Certificate Transfer for M three group.
Development and planning.
Reappointment of Shirley, Shirley Carter Powell to the Arts and Culture Commission.
City Operations.
The appointment of Carl Dorstheimer to the Next Michigan Development Corporation Board.
Development and planning.
And the reappointment of Jenny Geis to the Capitol Area Transportation Authority Board.
Committee of the Whole.
Issuance and sale of voter-approved unlimited tax general obligation bonds for public safety facilities.
Committee of the Whole.
And communications and petitions. We have an affidavit of disclosure from Cedric H. Ford of the Police Department.
Board of Ethics.
And an affidavit of disclosure from Peter Sakia of the Lansing Police Department.
Board of Ethics.
And a claim appeal for AAA Michigan Homes for eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars in trash fees at eleven nineteen Beaman Street.
City Operations.
Motion of excused absence.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, for the last time tonight, I would like to rise to excuse absent members.
All right, a motion to excuse Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Garza. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
We are to remarks by council members.
Councilmember remarks. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce and invite anybody to the Equity, Diversity, Committee on Wednesday, this Wednesday, four thirty, here on the tenth floor, basically looking for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion ideas and priorities moving forward, and anybody's welcome to bring their input and ideas. Thank you.
Other council, other council member comments? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore. No other remarks, other than come down for Silverbells. Yeah, okay.
All right, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. I do want to acknowledge that we received a written communication from Michael Morofsky that will be made part of the public record regarding Consumers Energy work in his neighborhood. And with that, we have Tamara Aaron, followed by Randy Martin.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tamara Aaron from Ward one. I'm here to speak on matters that are pertaining to the city attorney. We need changes, so this doesn't happen to anyone else with my experience. The city attorney has no obligation trying to continually be involved in private litigations when they're not a party to, but continue to do so. City attorney shouldn't be asking, acting on behalf of a citizen or nonsense as a citizen of Lansing, which they have done. City attorney involved themselves in private requests for mediation between two people, only three knew of this. That was myself, the attorney that wrote it, and the person that received it. It was never filed with the courts. City attorney continued contacting attorney who wrote mediation letter, who informed them he was not representing me. Some excuse they used, they could not contact me. I've had the same mailing address, email address, and phone number since I moved to Lansing. City attorney should never contact anyone's private legal counsel with false allegations trying to sway the legal team from assisting clients. The city knew they were not a party to litigation, but sent copies of what was sent on social media to the attorney to interfere, as well as lying by stating that I attended over a hundred council meetings. And everybody here knows I attended one through virtual in two thousand twenty-one, and before that was two thousand fifteen. They said that I was out of control. They told my attorney that I was mentally unstable. I'm here to tell you, all the accusations the city has made about me being unstable to the letters they wrote to HUD was inaccurate. I am not unstable. I never lied. The email that you tried to use against me to send to HUD to deem me incompetent was, it was ridiculous, because those are comments from our own citizens. I was not representing Mr. Mashan. Actually, it was Jody Washington that was assisting him, not me. You twisted things to manipulate and gaslight me. This comes from the mayor, the city attorney, and the development office. This has been turned over to DOJ. I'm not playing. I've been traumatized by you guys enough. And you know what? You stated, the city attorney stated, I met with Mr. Shore, the mayor, several times. I've never met with this man. You guys have lied several times. And if you think I'm incompetent because I'm emotional, this is wrong. It messed with my life because you would never discuss or talk to me. You ostracized me in every sense of the word, and even sent out letters to all staff they could not communicate with me, when you were not a party to a litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Randy Martin, followed by Michael Morofsky.
Good evening. Madam Vice President, Mayor, and the rest of the council members. I'll be brief. I only got three minutes, so that's, that's not even a quarter in a football game. But anyway, I just want to let you know, guys know, my granddaughter had an emotional breakdown about, about four weeks ago. We had to put her in the hospital. I keep it brief. The reason I'm here and I'm frustrated is because the City of Lansing, which I feel should have the services that she deserved, didn't have the services. So there's a gap there. We had to drive her a hundred and twelve miles away to a inpatient facility in north New Baltimore, Michigan. That's on the other side of Detroit. We didn't even have a, they didn't even have a bed available here in Lansing for it. There's a gap in that. So I, I'm putting, I'm putting all my tentacles out, even though I'm only one person. I want to let somebody know, I hope something can be done about this. I've reached out to different people. I have good conversations, but still, that's a need that needs to be filled in here in the City of Lansing. Don't take it lightly, because it could happen to anybody, and we didn't expect this to happen to our granddaughter, but it did. She's only ten years old. It ain't like she's fifteen, or eighteen, or twenty. She's only ten years old. She had to miss days of school, weeks of school, because she had basically an emotional breakdown. She was diagnosed with autism, and all of a sudden, it culminated into one big, one big breakdown. So she had to be, like I said before, if, if we didn't have to like drive her one hundred and twelve miles, I would feel better about it. I went to Sparrow, that's all they did was waste our time. I'm not a man who don't like, likes to waste time. I'm too old for that. So even though my frustration is not with the process that we went through, is the frustration that the services weren't here in the capital city of Michigan, and those services need to be fixed, and those services need to be resolved as quick as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Morofsky, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Michael Morofsky, that email that I sent you isn't really about Consumers Energy, it's with the current CSO project. Yesterday, I sent the mayor a copy of this. Carol, you got a copy, and so did Adam. I wanted Adam to see if he could come over and actually see the mess we have over there. Had a lot of difficulty with Alec Malvitas. He's getting a little too emotional. When I talked to him this summer about a question that a residence had, he screamed at me on the phone, which, as far as I'm concerned, is real unprofessional. I wouldn't take that from any of you. I still need the current president to, you'll pass it on to him when he feels better, if he would come over and look at my property and would read the email. Anything you could do, if you'd at least look at it, Mr. Mayor, would be appreciated, because it looks like next year, when they start tearing out these walkways that not everybody has, it's gonna make a lot of people, shall we say, unhappy. I had mine taken out. I asked twice the workman, are you going to replace my little walkway between the sidewalk and the curb? He said, yeah, before it's all over and done with, we'll replace it. It didn't happen, and same thing happened to my neighbor, so I, I had to put some pavers in myself. We just need our property put back the way it was. The residents that have the walkway, when they tear it out, return it to the way the property was before the project started. I guess I'd consider it a personal favor if you'd look at it, sir, and anything you can do, Carol. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Jody Washington.
Okay, going back to the public safety thing, this is just kind of an FYI. I'm not sure who's seen what, where, when, and how, but I have seen a couple of different things in print media that indicated that the Glendale Station, number nine, the fire station, would become part of the new facility and would be removed from its existing location and closed down. I don't know that that's accurate, but that perception is out there, so just be aware that if it isn't accurate, and if it's not a trial balloon, that somebody needs to step up and say, hey, no, Station nine is not going to be part of the new facility. It is going to be renovated or rebuilt, or whatever, at or near its current location. A station should not be relocated out of a neighborhood where it's an anchor to the neighborhood, or where its relocation would change response times without a whole lot of public conversation first. Secondly, going back to the idea of brownfields and Oprahs, we're constantly down here. Public is saying constantly, we don't like pilots, we don't like Oprahs, we don't like brownfields, because we're the ones paying for them. So let's quit just talking about it, and let's do something about it. Let's find some method or way to hold property owners responsible for the care and upkeep and maintenance of their properties, just like you do us presidentials, so that their facilities aren't allowed to get obsolete, so they aren't allowed to get contaminated, so that they're held accountable as time goes on, and we don't end up having to clean up their messes afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington, followed by Ross Fisher.
Can you do the clock? Thanks, Chris. You've shorted me before. I appreciate it. I'm Jody Washington. I'm gonna tell you, I'm tired, I'm angry, and somebody needs to listen. We have the same people come up week after week. Oh, we need more low, affordable housing, more low-income housing. Our nonprofit does this, our nonprofit does that. Let me tell you, I've been working with these nonprofits for three stinking years, and they are not doing the job. And the thing the city does is keeps throwing the same money at the same people to do the same thing, and I don't know how to tell you any stronger, it's not working. We need more nonprofits, says Sharon Dade. Nonsense. There are several out there that apply for the money, and they never get it, because it's this elite group of nonprofits that are part of the COC that get together and determine what the gaps are. And then, surprise, lo and behold, when you apply for the grants, they know exactly what to say. This is highway robbery at its best. I work every single day with the homeless people on the street, and I advocate for some, about five, that have been able to get housed, no thanks to the system we have in place. So much so, they have signed the paper saying to Advent House, Lansing Housing Commission, that I am their advocate, I have access, and I can advocate on their behalf. And Advent House told them, we're not talking to Jody anymore. She bothers us too much. Are you kidding me? I'm gonna bother you every doggone day if my people need something. Holy Cross, Mayor Shore, we told you six months before the crap hit the fan with Holy Cross, you did nothing. Then all of a sudden, there was a crisis because Holy Cross got pulled back. We told you. Senior citizens and families, that's not a new issue. When I found my first seventy-year-old that nobody would take in a shelter because he was incontinent on the street in a wheelchair and couldn't stand up, this is not new, and they are not fixing the system. So what I'm asking, I can't even begin to tell you the shortcomings. You heard the director of Holy Cross call them the most undesirable, and that is how they're treated. I've gone in with them, and I've been treated that way. So I am asking, Council, as you do leadership, this housing thing is not homelessness. Have an ad hoc on homelessness, and stop deferring Have an ad hoc on homelessness, and stop deferring everything to the COC and these elite nonprofits, because they've been doing the same thing for 20 years, and the problem's getting worse. So as you go forward, apparently Andy Shore doesn't want to do it, please, counsel, do the ad hoc. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ross Fisher, followed by Ricky Reynolds.
Good evening, everyone. Ross Fisher, I live on the east side. First off, want to say that I'm, I'm shocked to hear that the CIA is setting up operations in southwest Lansing. I think we need some oversight on that, in all seriousness. On the city elections, I want to congratulate Chris Swope and the city clerk's office on, on a great job. I've lived in other communities before that run elections in different ways, and, and I think this is, you know, the, the best run elections that I've, in a city that I've lived in, and I get the emails and, and the all-cap subject lines really catch my attention, so, so good job on that. And it was great to see a higher turnout in a city election, particularly in this, in this Ward 1 special election, and I think that it really shows that we should have these elections in even years with, with other elections, so that more people can vote in these. I'm not sure about the cost thing, but I, I, I'm guessing for the fiscal hawks, you probably could save some money to, if you run all the elections combined that way, but I'm not sure. But the most important thing really is that it allows for more, more representative city council, because more people vote. In our normal city council elections, we're lucky if we get 20, maybe 25 at the highest percent turnout, and these elections, we have significantly higher turnout, and I think that we need to seriously consider charter amendments in the future to, to change, to change that. On the Ward 1 race, congrats to Rhine Coast. I think Mayor Shore's foray into city council races has proven to be unsuccessful, and I think his relative on popularity in Ward 1 may have cost Brian Daniels the seat when an election that close. I think that was, that was a factor. Also, I was incredibly excited to see Prop 3 pass. I was looking at some of the numbers and, and looking back at the 1972 referendum in our county, that actually failed 49-51, and this time, 70% of the county voted yes, over 70, over 70% of the city of Lansing voted yes, and I think this is a, this is a huge relief, because, you know, had this not passed, this could have opened the door to a number of attacks on reproductive freedom in communities across the state, and the second most powerful person in city government, Jim Smirka, has a long history of pro-life activism, including membership on the board of a local crisis pregnancy center. And I think these kind of confusing and extreme views have no place in our city government. So I appreciate your time, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, and finally is Ricky Reynolds.
Hi. So as you just heard and were reminded, this past week, the people of Michigan voted in favor of Prop 3 to protect the right to obtain abortions in Michigan, and as Ross pointed out, the city of Lansing voted over 70%. There were precincts in the city that voted 87% in favor of this proposition. It's clear, it's abundantly clear, it's extremely obvious, that in spite of tremendous political opposition and threats, reproductive freedom, people in Lansing support access to abortion without undue restrictions by the state, or by police, or by anyone. And as you've heard, the city attorney, Jim Smirka, has spent a significant amount of his career on the board of directors of an anti-abortion nonprofit called Pregnancy Services of Greater Lansing. We call those organizations crisis pregnancy centers. They're organizations whose main objective, their main bottom line, is to end abortion, restrict access to abortion, and dissuade people in crisis from obtaining abortions regardless of their own needs. And usually, they do this by kind of masquerading as a clinic, or as providers of services. And so I'm here today to say, first of all, that I find this just repulsive and unacceptable, that someone who has made this his life's work, has so much power handed to him by Andy Shore, to make decisions about the lives and bodies of people in Lansing, and I really ask the council to think about what you can do to honor the resolution that you passed this summer in support of, in your words, the reproductive rights of all people, access to safe and legal abortion, and I think this resolution was commendable and quite brave in that moment this summer, and I would like to see it honored. And I want to remind everyone that we lived 40 years or something under Roe v. Wade, and it didn't protect us enough. Reproductive freedom over those decades was violently threatened, eroded by organizations like Pregnancy Services of Greater Lansing, and people like Jim Smirka. Prop 3 can't mean anything, it can't protect our rights without commitment from those in government to check these kinds of relationships, these kinds of appointments, and protect people from extragovernmental tactics like those of CPCs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that our final speaker? Then we will be adjourned, and our next council meeting will be December 5.